Good morning, everyone. And welcome to this morning's public hearing. With me today is Senator Amanda L. Shelton, Legislature Secretary. And this public hearing is conducted by my office, the office of James Moylan, and we will now come to order. So notice of this public hearing was disseminated to the media via electronic format on April 24, 2019, and the second notice was provided on May 9, 2019. Notice of the hearing was also made known to the Guam Legislature on our website. The items on our agenda today is Resolution Number 9835-COR, which was introduced by myself and co-sponsors Legislative Secretary Amanda L. Shelton, Senator Therese M. Terlahey, and Speaker Tina R. Munia Barnes. Now Resolution 98 initiates a process of seeking discussions on an array of health care issues that are important to our community. It addresses issues where the answers we seek or the support we desire are in our nation's capital. Thus, the resolution requests the assistance of our representative in the House of Representatives, Congressman Michael S. Nicholas, in initiating discussion with federal partner on these health care issues. Resolution 98 is far from complete, and which is why we are here today, to get your input on what else to add to the document if that is truly needed. And some of the items presently listed may take some time to attain, but if we don't start somewhere or lay a benchmark, we won't know where to begin. Plus, these are issues that take a collective effort if we are to seek success in any of our items identified. Thus, I look forward to your healthy conversation with Congressman S. Nicholas, Governor Lou Leon Garrel, her administrative representatives on health care issues, and of course, on my colleagues in the 35th Guam Legislature. So Resolution 9835 addresses seven items up for consideration, and they include the reimbursement rate and fee schedules for the Guam Memorial Hospital, Medicaid matching for Guam, cancer assistance grants for Guam, individual health insurance subsidies, modernization, modernizing the communications of the health care system, the high cost of prescription drugs, and our out-of-hospital procedures. Also, I'd like to introduce with me this morning is Senator Telo Tyteguay. Thank you for joining us. So once again, we're open to adding any additional items or amending the current ones, as this is not a final document, and our office will continue to receive your testimonies. So at this time, I'd like to welcome also Senator Luis Munia, so welcome as well. So those, I appreciate all your attendance today, and if you can kindly, those who wish to provide testimony, please come forward, and if I can have the sign-in sheet also, please. As you provide your written test or your verbal testimony, please identify yourself and your position clearly into the into the mic for our recording and listening audience. If there's no particular folks that are in a hurry because of obligations to get to next, if you can discuss among yourself, if there's otherwise, we can go from first to to. Okay. Ma'am, would you would you like to proceed first?
Senator Moylan, may I add that this is a team effort in our approach of all the government entities. So we have compiled all our responses in one testimony that you will have after I'm done. I'm the spokesperson, they nominated me, so all their inputs were given to me, and I put it all together on behalf of the team, so it makes your life easier.
Yeah, we're all smiling. We love that. Thank you. Can you make that regular procedure?
So I have copies for all of you, so not to worry, you'll get one. If you like it, I was hoping you'd listen to me first, but if you like it, not a problem. Okay, so. But what we'll do is we'll introduce ourselves, and then after the introduction, then I will represent everyone on this table with our testimony. And then we can answer any of your questions as it pertains to GMH, Department of Public Health, or the Department of Administration. Okay?
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Good morning. My name is Lilian Posades. I represent Guam Memorial Hospital.
Good morning, Senators. Edward Byrne, Director, Department of Administration.
And I'm Linda M. Pinko De Norsey, the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services.
Teresa Archangel, I represent the Medicaid program.
Good morning, Senators. My name is Kathy Rivera Castro, and I'm a community advocate, and I'm here representing myself.
Okay, we'll begin. Good morning, Senators of the 35th Guam Legislature. On behalf of the Governor of Guam and the government entities, Guam Memorial Hospital, Department of Public Health and Social Services, Department of Administration, we would like to provide comments on Resolution Number 98-35 relative to requesting the assistance of Congressman Michael S. Nicholas in addressing the following health care issues plaguing Guam: the Guam Memorial Hospital reimbursement rates and fee schedules, the Medicaid matching for Guam, number three, our cancer assistance grant for Guam, individual health insurance subsidies, modernizing the communications of health care system, high costs of prescription drugs, and out-of-hospital procedures. The resolution states on page one, line three to four, that Guam Memorial's hospital's reimbursement rate and fee schedules are out of date. It should be noted that GMHA rates and fees do not affect Medicare reimbursements on Part A, which is inpatient care services claims. However, the GMH rates and fees do affect Part B, which is the outpatient care reimbursements to a certain extent. The resolution also states on page two, line four to five, that it is recommended that the Medicare reimbursement rates be updated or revised to be closer to what is allowed to the new hospital, that's the Guam Regional Medical City, and allow both Medicare and Medicaid to compensate GMH at modern rates. This recommendation is impractical. Why? Because there are two hospitals, and they have different Medicare cost reports, and so the Medicare interim rate for each hospital will not be the same. The Medicare cost report is a standard calculation designed to arrive at the reimbursement rate for costs incurred at a hospital or other facility. The Guam Regional Medical City has a higher reimbursement rate because higher investment costs resulted in higher reimbursements. Now, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or what we call in the acronym TEFRA, passed in 1982, and that changed the Medicare reimbursement to the prospective payment system, or PPS, to ensure that all the U.S. hospitals continue to be paid and at a cost that is adjusted at an inflationary index factor. However, the TEFRA was not applicable to the U.S. the U.S. territories, right? Only to the U.S. states. And so it's not applicable to U.S. territories such as, of course, Guam, America Samoa, the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana, the Virgin Islands, which we continue to be paid on the pre-1982 basis. Then in 1997, 15 years after the TEFRA enactment, U.S. Congress again passed legislation following GMHA to rebase its rate. However, due to the unavailability of records during this time from the typhoon and computer overhaul at GMH, the average cost of care in 1992 to 1994 was used for rebasing. Therefore, the Medicare reimbursements were adjusted annually for inflation, but in 2003, the system collapsed. GMH began receiving only a portion of the costs incurred to treat Medicare patients. Several unsuccessful attempts were made to address these reimbursement shortfalls, culminating in a denial of a 2012 rebasing request, and then another rebasing denial issued in 2016. For several more years, GMHA continued to meet the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, or CMS, to submit timely reports to demonstrate filings of adjustments and rebasing requests, the reimbursement inequities, and the detrimental impact to the hospital. The cost of treating patients has really escalated at a much faster rate than the allowable Medicare reimbursement rate in treating patients at GMHA. And on January 12, 2019, 22 years after the last rebasing, CMS finally agreed to rebase GMH's discharge rate retroactively to October 1, 2013. This was significant. Why? Because GMH's Medicare cost report was audited by CMS Medicare Administrative Consultant, and it validated the allowable cost of care at GMHA. Today, GMHA has received $10.7 million in retroactive rate adjustment. However, despite the rebasing, GMHA is still reimbursed less than the cost of discharge. One way to provide the much-needed funding source for GMHA is for Medicaid and MIP to mirror the Medicare pays what Medicare pays GMH by changing the current Medicaid state plan to allow for the retroactive adjustment of Medicaid rates. Currently, as it stands, when Medicare changes its rates as the rebasing, Guam's Medicaid state plan prevents GMH from recouping the millions and millions in uncompensated care for Medicaid as well as MIP patients during the same period of the retroactive rate adjustment. Now, had the Medicaid state plan allow for the retroactive adjustment of Medicaid rates, then the Department of Public Health and Social Services could have drawn down the federal share of this additional reimbursement. Now, the additional reimbursement will also not only be applicable for GMH, but also for the Guam Regional Medical City, or GRMC. And GRMC has an even higher Medicare interim reimbursement rate than GMH, which is about 300% more than GMHA. The only caveat is that Medicaid program funding is capped at $17.97 million currently, and the government of Guam, Department of Public Health and Social Services, and Department of Administration, Mr. Byrne, would have to identify additional local funds to match the federal share. Thus, it is recommended that Department of Public Health amend the state plan to include one-year retroactive adjustment when Medicare adjusts the hospital's reimbursement rates, and again, that's for both GMH and Guam Regional Medical City reimbursement rates. The ACHA, the Affordable Care Act, provided significant benefits and very important health insurance reforms. The Medicaid expansion provision of ACHA to include the childless adults at 33% of the federal poverty level alleviated the shortfall of the locally funded medically-indigent program. Guam Medicaid program created its own poverty level called the Guam Medicaid Poverty Level, which is 30% to 31% lower than the federal poverty level of the 48 contiguous states and District of Columbia, depending on the household size. Additionally, the Medicaid expansion allowed MIP childless adults to qualify under the Medicaid program and avail of the medical benefits, thus reducing the cost of 100% locally-funded program. However, there are some disparities in the law that affects the U.S. territories. Beginning in 2014, the federal government funded the states that implemented the ACHA Medicaid expansion provision for childless adults at 100% of the cost of newly-eligible individuals for the first three years, and phased down gradually to a permanent rate in 2020 at 90% federal medical assistance percentage, or what we call FMAP. This is not allowable on Guam. Though ACHA increased the territory's FMAP by 5%, this is not enough to alleviate the local budget shortfall and to resolve the uninsured population because of Guam's economic issues. The cost of providing health care in Guam is higher than the U.S. mainland, partly because of its geographic location, the limited number of primary care physicians and specialists, and allied health professionals, and of course, the lack of tertiary care facilities. The FMAP of the 50 states, including District of Columbia, varies by state per capita income, which currently ranges between 50% to 74%. In addition, the Medicaid programs in the U.S. territories are subject to an annual federal cap funding, unlike the states and District of Columbia that are open-ended. There is no cap. However, Guam's regular Medicaid's FMAP is fixed in statute and not based on per capita income. Prior to the supplemental funding of $268 million brought about by Section 205 of the ACHA, Guam Medicaid always expands its annual federal cap funding before each fiscal year ends. The ACHA provides significant benefits and important health insurance reforms. However, the limited application of its provisions to the U.S. territories, its insufficient funding allocation of federal funds to implement health insurance exchange, and the Medicaid expansion significantly limits Guam's opportunity to implement new health care innovations and provide coverage to Guam's uninsured population. Because of the ACHA's limitation in funding and the limitation or some of its most important provisions for the insular U.S. territories, Guam decided that the health insurance exchange would not be beneficial to implement. Additionally, the ACHA funding of $268 million partly alleviated the financial shortfall, not only of Medicaid, but also of Guam's locally-funded medical assistance program called the medically-indigent program, where most of the COFA's citizens qualify. The additional funding provided by Section 2005 of ACHA allowed Guam to shift the cost of COFA's emergency services to Medicaid. Also, Guam obtained additional funding of $268 million as a separate ACHA provision to help alleviate its Medicaid funding shortfall. The 45% required local match provides hardship in fully expanding the program and utilizing the $268 million. Unfortunately, Guam would not be able to expand the aforementioned ACHA funding, which will expire in September 30, 2019. In 2017, the $147 million was spent on education, public safety, health care, and social service programs, servicing, of course, these migrants. Of this amount, $38.5 million was spent on health care and welfare services for these migrants while living in Guam. It is certain that compact impact federal support does not address the true cost of welfare afforded to citizens of freely-associated states who reside on Guam, especially health care costs, since these citizens look to Guam to provide many medical services not found in their domiciles. Guam's Medicaid expenditures went up by 323% from $26,185,419 in 2009 to $110,876,286 in 2018. And again, this is due to the increase in utilization, the cost of medical treatment, the new medical technology or mode of treatment, and the increasing cost of drugs. Upon expiration of ACHA Section 2005, Guam will be left with just the regular Medicaid funding, which is $17.97 million for 2019, and that includes the administration and medical services payments, and $24.4 million of Section 1323 of ACHA, which expires in December 2019, to utilize for the medical needs of Medicaid adult population. This, again, Senators, is not enough. Therefore, in order to efficiently continue the administration of the Medicaid program in assisting the disadvantaged populations in Guam, we would like to propose to remove the expiration date of funding appropriation under Section 2005 and Section 1323 of ACHA until it's expended. We'd like to also increase the FMAP of Guam and remove the federal funding cap. Moreover, the resolution states on page three, lines 10 to 12, that it is recommended to attain a special waiver to the territorial health insurers on the ACHA requirements so that they can have the underwriting protections to avoid adverse selections and create a sustainable health insurance market in the islands and to further seek access to federal subsidies. Our comment to this section is that it would be a disadvantage for health insurance plan subscribers and potential subscribers if the carriers were permitted to exclude high-risk customers or alter the current prohibition of lifetime maximums. Furthermore, the resolution states on page three, line 13 to 17, and I quote, "The island's health care technology and communications is rather antiquated and lacks modernization, which creates additional burden to providers and makes the system insufficient. Therefore, it is recommended to seek a technical grant to modernize the health care communications infrastructure to yield a better and more capable health care system." Our comment to this section is that Medicaid grants were available to update technology and establish the island health insurance exchange. Many of our primary and secondary providers decided not to utilize this new technology, generally due to the cost of them, the cost of implementation and maintenance, preferring to continue to use the old processes for patient care. Providers should be incentivized to adopt new technology. Additionally, the resolution states, and I quote, "It is recommended to provide a means for a special exemption for the island under a demonstration project program to obtain prescription drugs from neighboring countries, which are normally lower price versus if the drugs came from the United States mainland, and further to allow the Department of Public Health and Social Services of the government of Guam to serve as a purchasing wholesaler and to be able to supply the island's pharmacy retailers." As a territory of the United States, Guam must purchase drugs that are FDA-approved. Additionally, prescription drugs obtained from the U.S. must meet Federal Drug Act standards versus drugs obtained from other states which are not required to adhere to the U.S. food and drug safety standards. Moreover, the impact of counterfeit drugs entering the U.S. health care system led to the Draw Quality and Security Act, or this is called DQSA in its acronym. This was enacted in Congress on November 27, 2013. This new law requires that all drugs be tracked from manufacturer to the point of sale or dispensing to prevent the possibility of any counterfeit drugs entering and unknowingly being dispensed from the pharmacy to the individual. Title II of DQSA, the Drug Supply Chain Security Act, outlined steps to build an electronic interoperable system to identify and trace certain prescription drugs as they are distributed in the United States. This will enhance FDA's ability to help protect consumers from exposure to drugs that may be counterfeit, stolen, contaminated, or otherwise harmful. The system will also improve detection and removal of potentially dangerous drugs from the drug chain supply to protect U.S. consumers. Overall, the logistics and magnitude of accomplishing the role of a drug wholesaler should be factored in before the government of Guam decides to establish such a venture, because with all costs considered, it might not result in a lower cost for the drugs. Moreover, requiring Department of Public Health and Social Services to serve as a purchasing wholesaler and be able to supply the island's pharmacy retailers is not feasible. There are a lot of legal issues when considering medication therapy and being able to ensure the efficacy, the safety, the therapeutic effects of drugs coming from unknown origins or foreign entities that are not scrutinized by FDA. Thus, the Department of Public Health cannot perform the action of FDA to uphold the stringent requirements for medications that are approved in the United States. However, a more viable option will be to purchase lower-priced medications through the Department of Health and Human Services Program Support System, or what we call AT Perry Point. Although the list of medications and supplies available through PSC is limited, it adheres to the strict guidelines of the FDA, unlike the proposed plan of purchasing directly from foreign countries. The cost savings will be apparent, considering the reduced federal prices from this entity, and the regulations for compliance are less stringent for purchased medications as compared to the 340B drug discount pricing program. Thank you, Senators, for allowing us this opportunity to provide our comments relative to Resolution 98-35. And this was all prepared, as I mentioned, from these wonderful people up here, Ms. Lilian Peres Posades and her team, Benita Manglonia, and of course, Mr. Byrne from the Department of Administration, myself, and Teresa Archangel to my left. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have at this point in time.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda De Norsey. I really appreciate that it was a team effort, because basically, it sounds like superheroes here, so I appreciate that. It was really well explained. We can, I can see where some things need to be adjusted, and I really appreciate that what you pointed out, and the solutions, most especially. And that was the whole objective of this public hearing, is to listen and hear the recommended solutions. At this time, I'd like to ask any of my fellow colleagues here if they have any questions for the panel based on this presentation. Senator Luis? Oh, sorry. Senator Telo Tyteguay.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Moylan, for the opportunity, and it is quite a dream team right here, sitting in front of us, so I appreciate the effort that you put into this. It is a big fight, and if we don't continue to fight for these concerns and efforts, then nothing's going to happen. So we have to continue this open dialogue. We have to continue to provide our input from the island and not be asleep at this. Greatly appreciate all the work you've put into this, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator.
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you very much for all of the testimony. It's a lot to digest, so I'm still trying to work my way through it, so I think I will be sending some questions over to you if I have them at a later time. But I want to say thank you for coming here today to give your testimony. I know you're all very busy, and I just want to extend my appreciation, especially to all of our workers at the hospital, as it is Hospital Week and Nurses Week, so to all of you, thank you.
And Senator Luis Munia.
My sentiments exactly as well, excuse me. It is a lot to absorb. There's a lot of things going on in this one resolution. I'm not sure if we'll be able to accomplish everything just bundling it all up in one, or should we break it down by piece by piece? It just seems like this is probably the fastest route, but probably not. Just like Senator Shelton here, I'll probably be sending a lot of my questions towards all of you, just to break it down piece by piece. Thank you very much for your presence here today.
Thank you, Senator. There was a lot of information you provided, and I thank you so much. We do have our own questions, but it's probably better we also come together as a team to address those questions. But I do like, not only did you make some major points, but you offered some solutions, and that's what we we need, so I appreciate that. If there's any other testimonies you'd like to make, otherwise, we're fine.
The only comment I had to make was, even though the health centers do the 340B drug discount pricing program, which has saved the government tons of money, we want to make it a little bit more streamlined, because it's a very rigorous process of monitoring these drugs, very stringent guidelines, and I think Perry Point would be the best route, the Department of Health and Human Services. I know Lilian has been having it for the longest time. We just need to pay the vendor on time, and if we can do that, I think that this would be an excellent solution for the drugs in terms of getting the best bang for our bucks in regards to getting our drugs a lot cheaper. And it's U.S. standards that we have to adhere to because of federal, the Food and Drug Act, so we want to ensure safety by all means. So I hope, Senators, you understand that we're not FDA at public health. We can only do so much, and we don't have the expertise on that area, and it does have a lot of legal ramifications.
Thank you, Senator.
Me too. It just popped into my head. Ms. Posades, you, we talked about the rate increase, the fees for Guam Memorial Hospital, and it's always been brought to my attention that and it's always been brought to my attention that they're very low. And when was the last time that you had a fee increase, and when's a potential next one?
We have been with the board's resolution. We have been increasing the rates at 5% every year. So even at that, we're still below industry standards in terms of, you know, rates that we can charge. And then every now and then, when we have new items, new procedures, we then also add those to the CPT as far as new fees and new rates, and we do public hearings on those.
But that's done, every year you said 5%.
5% is what?
However, have you looked into, there's something that, if I'm not mistaken, every five years, or maybe that's the 5% I'm looking at, or every three years, that you do a substantial rate increase, not just 5%?
We'll look into that, but that's what we're following right now for the board resolution.
Okay, I'm sure with the new board that you have in tack, I've seen some people with good financial background.
Correct.
That will look at that and look at providing, you know, keeping up to date, like with other hospitals.
And we appreciate that you recognize that, because we do too, that the rates are low.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Senator Shelton.
Thank you, thank you very much, Senator Moylan. Maybe for Tess and Linda, if you can explain how it, what kind of waiver we have, or how is it possible that for people from Guam receiving treatment in the Philippines, perhaps they are able to reimburse with Medicaid there when they're using these foreign drugs from the Philippines?
If it's from the hospital, because the hospital is a JACO-certified facility, then we can pay, but we cannot pay outside of the hospital.
Okay, for you folks, I appreciate your testimonies. I know you're busy to get back to your office, and then we'll conclude, we'll continue on with our testimonies, but please thank you so much for coming. And if there's anybody else wishing to make additional testimony, please take your seat up here, and then we can also proceed. Ma'am, thank you for your patience. Please identify your name also.
Buenos Aires Senator James Simey Moylan and Senators of the 35th Guam Legislature. My name is Kathy Rivera Castro, and I'm a resident of Wong Mong. I'm appearing before you in full support of Resolution 98-35. I have appeared often before many legislative bodies in testimony of legislation that will promote creating a healthier island community. I spend many of my days volunteering for several organizations that seek to promote such an endeavor. The goals and missions of these organizations is to ensure that those in our community have access to healthcare that would afford them a quality of life that each of us deserves, but ultimately saves lives. My most important role, however, is that of a mother and a grandmother. I want to ensure that the island, my grandchildren, and the generations after them will grow up in a community that is productive, safe, and healthy. This is why I, once again, am appearing before you. I often speak about my son Andre, his medical condition, and the challenges he and our family has had and continues to face today. Andre was diagnosed with osteoclastoma in the thoracic ten in 2008. At that, at the time of his diagnosis, we had no medical insurance coverage. I hesitated to seek medical care. My husband was unemployed at the time, and we had lived on my social security disability allotment, which was less than $700 monthly. We had a mortgage along with our daily living expenses. It was a struggle, and I made a choice, one, mind you. I regret wholeheartedly every day since then. When I finally decided to seek medical care for him and the diagnosis was determined, we were told that we needed to take him off island for the care he needed was not available on island. I was totally devastated. What was I to do? I was informed that I could apply for medical assistance with the Department of Public Health and Social Services, for which I did. At that time, Andre was hospitalized at GMH, and his condition was dire. Emergency approval was given. We were able to have the cost of his hospitalization covered, as well as seek medical care off island that he needed. This saved his life. We remained on public assistance for many years as Andre continued his cancer journey. Andre is one of the thousands of individuals from our community that have been diagnosed with a life-threatening medical condition and continues to fight the good fight to stay alive. But let's not forget the choices that I made back in the very beginning, that I had no insurance and no resources financially to seek medical care in a timely manner. You each know that this is a circumstance that occurs more often than not. Many in our community make this same choice on a daily basis, not because they want to, but because it is the choice they are left to make. On Guam, one case of cancer is diagnosed each day, and one person dies from cancer every two and a half days. These statistics is taken from the Guam Cancer Facts and Figures 2008 to 2012. This is an alarming statistic. The person that is diagnosed today could be my and possibly even your loved one. They could be the one that has lost the good fight in the last three days and might be the one that will lose their battle in another three days. For some of them, it is due to the fact that their diagnosis was found in the late stages that it could have been prevented through early detection, screening, and diagnose. However, without access to healthcare, this is not always the case. I'm fully aware of our limited resources on island, but lives are being lost, and if there is a way that we can expand and increase these resources, why shouldn't we seek those avenues? A life matters. We are U.S. citizens that reside in a U.S. territory. This is our home and our people. Fighting for the basic right for access to healthcare is a must. I made this promise to my son when he was first diagnosed. Son, you need to fight this disease, only you can, because it is in your body. But I promise you that I will fight anything and anyone to get you what you need to stay alive. Let us allow those fighting their disease to concentrate on merely that, fighting the disease within their body, and let us join forces and fight everyone and everything else for them. I'm happy to support this resolution because it will provide the much-needed additional assistance our community desperately needs. The financial burden of cancer is enormous. The physical challenges are many, and the need for assistance and support is great. But this reality is not restricted only to cancer, to cancer patients, but to anyone with a medical condition. Our people have always been faced with the hardships of access to comprehensive healthcare due to our distance from specialty care treatment facilities and professionals that are not available on island. Many are often faced with the burden of having to travel off island to access those specialized care. This adds additional financial implications on top of the already high cost of medical care and treatment. We have lost too many of our people in our paradise island because they are uninsured, underinsured, or financially incapacitated. But there are still many that continue to fight with everything they have. We must continue to stand with them and their families. This resolution lets them know that they are our people, that a life matters, and mostly that their life matters. At this year's cancer retreat, I had shared a quote by Edward Everett Hell that I wish to share with you today. "I am only one, but still I am one. I cannot do everything, but I can do something. And because I cannot do everything, I will not refuse to do something I can do." I applaud each of you for your proactiveness in refusing not to do the something that each of you can do. That's the something that I and our people has asked of you. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to make my voice heard and for joining you in supporting the Resolution 98-35. Sinema Ossie. I chose to come here today as a mother and a grandmother and as an individual. I know that our government agency heads have given you statistics and data, and I just thought that it was important that you hear from someone within their community that has gone through this challenge and be a voice for those that are continuing their challenge. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony and sharing their personal experience with your family. We truly appreciate that. I'd like to ask any of my colleagues if they have any questions, please. Senator Munya.
Thank you very much, Kathy, for being here, and I could, I could never get enough of your story. I mean, I hear it a lot, but first of all, I just want to wish you a very happy Mother's Day.
Thank you.
And I think, I think your, your story is so inspiring to not just moms, but just families in general, and you have such a genuine heart, and I could feel that, and I think any organization or any foundation is lucky to have you on their side because you're a great advocate for patients. But I also wanted to ask you, I mean, you said you support the resolution, but is there just certain portions of the resolution, or just, I mean, just as a community partner, do you support just the cancer portion or this whole entire?
No, the entire resolution, because that would, as I said, that the circumstances that our cancer patients endure and undergo is not limited to them at all. I mean, our heart patients, our diabetes patients all encounter the same obstacles, and access to healthcare is something that I see on a daily basis. And the challenge that I had in trying to decide whether can I really afford to take him, and maybe it's not that serious, I know, I know for a fact that I've come across many people that have made the same statements, and if we can increase coverage for reimbursement rates, maybe then for Medicare and Medicaid, maybe then we can be able to provide additional care to more people, and then they'll be able to have access to seeing a doctor and early detection and screening and diagnose, and we can save more lives, you know? So I support the resolution in its entirety.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Shelton? Thank you. Okay. Thank you for, so much for your testimony. Appreciate your time. Thank you. Okay, next, sir. Go right ahead.
Thank you, senators. My name's Eric Plensky, Vice President, Corporate Affairs of Guam Regional Medical City, and I'll just read a brief testimony in favor of the entire resolution, but we'll, we'll talk about each component. I will, however, say that of the seven items identified, you know, GRMC is going to identify number two, Medicaid match, is the most critical and important to focus on. If you had to prioritize, we feel that one's the number one issue because of the time horizon we're dealing with and the massive amount of federal funds that will disappear in less than a year. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony for Resolution 98-35 that requests the assistance of Congressman Michael FQ San Nicholas in addressing the following healthcare issues plaguing Guam with the respective federal authorities. Number one, Guam Memorial Hospital reimbursement rates and fee schedules. Number two, Medicaid matching for Guam. Number three, cancer assistance grants for Guam. Number four, individual health insurance subsidies. Number five, modernizing the communications of the healthcare system. Number six, high-cost prescription drugs. And number seven, out-of-hospital procedures. Guam Regional Medical City supports the resolution as reflected below. Number one, Guam Memorial Hospital reimbursement rates and fee schedules. GRMC supports the reassessment of GMH's Part A inpatient and Part B outpatient Tefra rates to determine if GMH should be receiving higher reimbursements from Medicare. Since the Guam Medicaid state plan also ties Medicaid and the medically indigent program reimbursements to Medicare rates, an adjustment to Medicare Part A and Part B reimbursement rates for GMH will also impact Medicaid and MIP reimbursements to GMH. Based upon recent media reports, it appears that GMH's Medicare reimbursement rates may have already been increased, but further analysis is necessary. Medicaid matching for Guam. The Affordable Care Act provided Guam with $268.3 million in supplemental Medicaid funds under the ACA Section 2005 and an additional $24.4 million in supplemental Medicaid funds under ACA Section 1323 totaling additional fund, Medicaid funds of $292.8 million. The Section 2005 funds must be spent by September 30, 2019, and the Section 1323 funds must be spent by December 31, 2019. However, the Section 1323 funds can only be spent after exhausting the Section 2005 funds. At this point, it looks like there's no way we're going to spend the 2005 funds, so one might consider the 1323 funds will have no access to. I think public health may have some idea of maybe a unique opportunity there to where we could access 1323 funds once the 2005 funds exhaust. That'd be great, but I think it's highly unlikely. Utilization of the ACA funds require the same Medicaid local matching requirements in the territories. As of February 28, 2019, there was about $61.7 million of unspent Section 2005 funds and all of the $24.4 million of unspent Section 1323 funds totaling $86.1 million as of end of February. Let's see where I'm at here. The Guam Legislature should increase the local Medicaid match budget to ensure that all ACA funds will be spent before the expiration dates. I know that's probably next to impossible to do, but it's the goal. Federal waivers should also be sought so that ACA funds can be spent beyond the current expenditure deadlines, as public health also recommends. GRMC supports removing the Medicaid annual cap and applying the federal medical assistance percentage, also known as the FMAP formula, for the five U.S. territories. By applying the FMAP formula, the same way it is used to calculate the federal match for all 50 states with per capita income as the reference, Guam and the other four territories would likely obtain the maximum 83% federal match for adult Medicaid rather than the current 55% federal match. By the way, that would bring in over $100 million per year to Guam, more than it's getting now using 2010 per capita income statistics that were identified in the 2010 census, comparing Guam per capita income against the nation's. Guam's is about $12,800 in 2010, and the nation's was in the mid to upper $30,000 range. We would have capped at about 92% if we ran the formula, but of course, the cap is 83%. So we would likely hit that and achieve 83% federal match. Okay? Let me get back to my testimony. Guam, okay, with the removal of an annual cap and by applying the FMAP based upon per capita income, Guam would be able to finally financially sustain its Medicaid program. According to the MACPAC fiscal year 2017, I don't know the, MACPAC is an acronym, is basically the federal entity that oversees Medicaid and the children's health insurance program in the territories. I provide a link, you can go to that link, and you'll find the entire report that came out in March 2019 for fiscal year ending 2017. And Guam currently provides coverage to individuals, including children with modified adjusted gross incomes, up to 133% of the Guam poverty level, which is only 72% of the federal poverty level. Under the Affordable Care Act, residents of the 50 states can receive Medicaid financial subsidies with earnings up to 400% of the federal poverty level. If Guam were able to receive an FMAP of 83% with no annual cap, the income threshold to qualify for Medicaid could be raised, and there would be fewer uninsured individuals on Guam as a result. If the annual cap is not removed, Guam will see federal Medicaid funding drop from about $60 million per year down to eight, about $18.5 million per year, starting in fiscal year 2020, a $41.5 million annual drop. That's the Medicaid fiscal cliff we're facing right now. Following is a summary of the Guam Medicaid and Children's Health Insurance Program enrollment from fiscal year 2011 to 2019 as of November 30, 2018, as provided through Guam Public Health, so these statistics can be verified with them, which showed a 23.31% overall increase in growth of enrollment over the eight-year period, including both adult Medicaid and children's health insurance program. Went from about 35, 35,357 enrollees in 2011 to about 43,600 as of beginning of fiscal year 2019. The big increase came in adult enrollment, which was about a 60% increase in the, during the years of the ACA, and some of that, a big chunk of that, it was because they, as Tess, I'm sorry, as Linda Denorcy mentioned, they added the Childless Adult Program, which brought in about 4,100 new enrollees into the program as well. So with that said, moving on to cancer assistance grants for Guam, GRMC- So with that said, moving on to cancer assistance grants for Guam, GRMC supports the initiative and provides world-class cancer treatment through its medical oncology, hematology, radiation oncology, and surgical oncology services. Individual health insurance subsidies. GRMC supports this initiative to establish a health insurance marketplace on Guam with federal premium subsidies to be provided up to 400% of the federal poverty level using the same criteria as the 50 states. This initiative would require an employer health insurance mandate. Now, this also would assume that we would get the federal financial support to pull this off, which, you know, Linda mentioned, we don't have under current statute. So we would need to get the U.S. to support us the same way they did the 50 states, by providing federal premium subsidies based on per capita income. Modernizing the communications of the health care system. GRMC supports the establishment of a health information exchange on Guam. An HIe would allow physicians, nurses, other health care providers, and patients to access and securely share vital patient medical information electronically to improve the speed, quality, safety, and cost of patient care. The HIe would provide interoperability to health care providers that use different electronic health record EHR systems. It should be noted that we, we were on that path, I believe, years ago. It was an ambitious, bold start, and then I think it came to a screeching halt. One issue, I think the vendor that Guam was using for this potential HIe, Health Insurance, Health Information Exchange, went bankrupt. I think the team at Public Health could elaborate more in detail, but we had a plan, we started, and then it dissipated, and we haven't resurrected it yet. High cost of prescription drugs. GRMC supports the initiative to secure lower-cost drugs, but said drugs should meet minimum quality standards such as those set by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, same concern that Mr. Denorcy stated earlier. Finally, out-of-hospital procedures. GRMC supports the initiative to develop more flexible Medicare reimbursement guidelines for treating patients both in and out of a hospital setting in Guam due to the limited number of specialists on the island and Guam's remote location in comparison to other patient provider options in Hawaii and the U.S. mainland. We sincerely appreciate the legislature's commitment to raising the quality of health care in Guam, and please be assured of GRMC's partnership in this endeavor. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Eric. That was a very thoughtful and explanation to include solutions, so I really appreciate your input. Thank you so much. I'd like to ask any of my colleagues, have anything, wish to comment, or any questions? No? Okay. Thank you so much, Eric. We'll take this under advisement. Appreciate your time. Are there any other folks willing to, would like to make any comment? Okay. All right, so in concluding our public hearing today, I'd like to thank my colleagues and the public for their support on this resolution and the testimonies provided, and we will continue to accept any written testimony for the next 10 days, which can be addressed to my office at 407 DNA Building, 238 Archbishop Flores Street in Agania, or you can deliver your testimony to the Guam Congress Building, or to my attention via email to senator moylan@guamlegislature.org. This public hearing for Resolution 98-35 is now adjourned. Thank you.